To order and start with a roll call, please.
Mayor Weiss.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Feller.
Here.
Councilmember Keine.
Here.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Here.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Here.
If you would join me in the pledge of allegiance, please. Mr. Mullen.
Mayor and council, we only had one item on the closed session agenda. It was conference with labor negotiator involving the property, the rental properties located on the pier that is Ruby's, as well as the properties located on the strand in Fish. The specific properties are listed on page two of the agenda. Under negotiations are price and terms for the lease of the property and the potential abatement of rent. And there's no action at this time under the Brown Act to report, but the council did give direction with respect to the abatement of rent. And we will report out on those when they're final. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, we'll go to our consent calendar, which are items four through 12. Mr. Navarro, do we have any public?
No public.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second.
Proof five oh.
With that, we'll go to our general item thirteen, which is a resolution approving a master license agreement for small cell wireless facilities on city-owned streetlight Mr. Navarro, we're supposed to have a call-in person on this. Do you know if they are on the line?
It's the attorney.
They are on the line, and they have been unmuted for this presentation.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Weiss and city council members. My name is Cheryl Coffin of our property management department, and I am here tonight to introduce the resolution for a master license agreement template to authorize small cell wireless facilities located on city-owned infrastructure within the public right-of-way. I will provide a brief history and overview of the process for creating this master license agreement template and the relevant terms herein, and then hand the presentation over to our outside counsel, who will provide the legal frameworks and background which provided the impetus for this master license agreement. Staff recommends that council adopt this resolution approving this master license agreement template to authorize small cell wireless facilities located on public infrastructure located within the right-of-way. Authorize the city manager to execute master license agreements with qualified wireless telecommunications providers, to delegate authority to negotiate additional changes after adoption as appropriate and necessary. Telecommunications carriers wish to install small cells, a type of small wireless facility, on our city-owned streetlight poles. The city owns approximately eight thousand streetlight poles within the public right-of-way, many of which are potentially suitable for installing wireless communication facilities such as small cells. The city currently has approximately sixty small cell facilities located on poles within the right-of-way, and around thirty wireless communication facilities such as macro sites also located on poles within the right-of-way. The concept is not new to the city. The primary reason that staff recommends this item is that recent changes in federal regulation have rendered various provisions in the city's existing license agreements unenforceable. For instance, cities are now required to offer cost-based rates for access to municipal poles and cannot negotiate market rents. Small cells increase the coverage and speed of carrier networks, and they do operate with both 4G and 5G technology. Small cells are explicitly defined by the Federal Communications Commission, here and after referred to as the FCC, and they are defined according to height and volume. You can see example of a 4G pole here. Small cells are not specifically limited by frequency. They do use both 4G and 5G technology. A small cell is defined as an attachment to a structure that is fifty feet in height or less, that is no greater than ten percent taller than an adjacent structure, and as shown here, contains no greater than twenty-eight cubic feet of accessory equipment. Small cells can contain any number of antennas, as long as each one is three cubic feet or less. A common misconception is that small cells did not exist before 5G. The city has existing small cell agreements that have been in place for the past five to ten years, respectively. For 5G deployments, equipment and software upgrades will occur to existing macro sites along with deployment of new small cells. Small cells generally consume less power and cover less distance than macro cells, and they can be deployed on city-owned infrastructure such as streetlight poles primarily due to the ubiquity of poles and their availability of power and data connections. The impetus for this master license agreement template was the September 27, 2018 FCC declaratory ruling and third report in order, which will here and after be referred to just as the order. Pursuant to the order, staff evaluated existing telecommunications agreements for small cells, our telecommunications ordinance, pending small cell telecommunications agreements and related procedures. Ultimately, staff retained Telecom Law Firm to assist in creating this template master license agreement, or MLA, that conforms to the order and other applicable laws. Telecom Law Firm has previously assisted the city in updating its telecommunications ordinance, and has also assisted numerous municipalities throughout the state in crafting similar license agreements. The term of this MLA is for ten years. During this ten-year period, the MLA allows licensees to request the right to attach to individual poles located within the city right-of-way, which furthers the city's general policy to promote the use of existing vertical infrastructure as opposed to dropping new poles within the right-of-way. This MLA does not actually authorize any construction or installation. It merely provides the general terms that govern attachment rights to city-owned poles. Any license that the city issues under this MLA still needs to be approved by the engineering division for compliance with all required permits and approvals. This process is consistent with the manner in which the city has been processing small cells for the past decade. Under the MLA, the city retains the right to terminate any site license that interferes with municipal functions or threatens public health or safety. The MLA also provides various risk allocations provisions that include indemnification, insurance requirements, and limitations on city liability. To the extent that any claims are filed against the city, in connection with the MLA, the licensee would be responsible for defending the city against those claims. In addition, the city's standard insurance requirements would be attached as an exhibit, ensuring that the city would be made whole in the event that anything goes wrong. Each site license will require a radio frequency emissions compliance report, which will demonstrate that each facility complies with FCC regulations. It is important to note that Congress prohibits local governments from denying applications on the basis of RF emissions as long as those RF emissions are within FCC regulations. The RF compliance report requirement in this MLA will ensure the safety of Oceanside residents and visitors, as small cells are deployed in greater numbers throughout the community. Pursuant to federal regulations, this MLA is intended to be revenue-neutral. The city will use the FCC safe harbor rate of $270 per attachment to each city-owned infrastructure. The MLA further provides that any costs incurred that exceed the per-site fee of $270 may be recovered through a written demand for reimbursement. Staff recommends that council adopt this resolution approving a master license template agreement for small cell facilities located on city-owned infrastructure within the public right-of-way. Authorize the city manager or designate to execute master license agreements with qualified wireless telecommunications providers, and to delegate authority to negotiate additional changes after adoption as necessary and appropriate. I will now hand this presentation over to Michael Johnston, senior associate with Telecom Law Firm, who will provide the legal frameworks and background of telecommunications law as it pertains to the city of Oceanside and to this master license agreement template.
Good evening, Mayor Weiss, members of the council. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
We got him? We got it. We got you.
Perfect. And forgive me, I'm doing this telephonically, but it's going to be a little bit of a, you know, a little bit of a try and test to try and see if we get this presentation correct. Cheryl, are we at the title slide right now?
Title slide is ready to go.
Perfect. All right. Good evening, everyone. As Cheryl mentioned, my name is Michael Johnston. I'm the city's outside counsel that helped draft and prepare the template master license agreement for your review tonight, for your consideration. And I just want to start off by giving a little bit of background on our law firm. We represent hundreds of municipalities and local governments in these sorts of negotiations for master license agreements, in addition to adopting regulations and ordinances that, you know, regulate the deployment of these facilities within local communities. We do not represent the industry. We do not represent wireless carriers whatsoever. Our primary business is representing local governments in these sorts of, in these sorts of proceedings. So with that, I'd like to move on to the next slide, Cheryl. Talk about the legal frameworks and recent changes that kind of provide the reason for why we're here tonight. And if you can move to the next slide, Cheryl, on the California Public Utilities Code. I just wanted to mention, you know, kind of the overarching state law that impacts the city's ability to regulate facilities within the right-of-way, but also why we're here with an MLA tonight. Cities are responsible for regulating the relationship between public utilities and the residents. So we have to, we play a role in this process. But another provision under the Public Utilities Code, section 7901, grants telephone corporations, of which these wireless providers qualify as, a statewide franchise for access to the public right-of-way, to the extent that it does not incommode the public's use, and that's an archaic term that essentially means that our aesthetic control over the right-of-way is preserved. So given that providers have a statewide franchise, it's really important to think about what happens if the city elects not to license its poles. And the first thing is that if the city does not elect to license its poles, carriers are entitled to go and use other poles, whether they're third-party utility poles owned by SDG&E, or whether they're brand-new poles in the right-of-way. So the MLA is intended to encourage the use of existing infrastructure to the extent possible, understanding the fact that we have to allow carriers into the right-of-way under state law. Third, once they have entered the right-of-way in the, in the construction and occupation of the right-of-way, we, the city is responsible for, you know, adopting reasonable time, place, and manner controls, meaning that they, you know, whenever there's an excavation in the road, or a trench, or the way they string their lines on overhead utility poles, those are subject to reasonable time, place, and manner controls. Our regula, our ability to say when they can start construction, what they do when they do it, and they have to be applied equally to all types of providers. Next slide, Cheryl. It's important to also note that although we have fairly broad, you know, aesthetic authority under state law, those, that authority is limited, further limited under federal law. And under the Telecommunications Act of nineteen sixty, nineteen ninety-six, Congress adopted forty-seven USC 332C7, provide three substantive limitations and two procedural requirements. The main substantive limitations that cannot effectively prohibit or prohibit the deployment of wireless facilities in local communities. It means you just can't broadly say no in large swaths of the community. You also can't unreasonably discriminate between functionally equipped and service providers. That effectively means that you have to treat like and like alike, right? If Sprint or T-Mobile comes in for deployment, if you approve it in one fashion for them, it has to be approved in a very similar fashion under similar circumstances for AT&amp;T or Verizon, Crown Castle. The third requirement is that the city cannot regulate on the basis of environmental effects from radio frequency to the, to the extent that those emissions comply with FCC regulation. And it's been widely held that environmental effects also means human exposure to radio frequency, that they're one in the same. Under the procedural requirements that the city has to follow, we have to act within a reasonable time when an application is submitted. And the FCC has adopted some presumptively reasonable timeframes within which the city is required to act, or to act, and I'll talk about those on a later slide. Any decision that the city makes in its regulatory capacity also has to be in writing and based on substantial evidence in a written record. So when the engineering division is reviewing applications and adopting, issuing permits or denying permits, those decisions have to be in writing. Next slide, Cheryl. So in late 2018, the FCC adopted a handful of orders that interpret this provision of federal law, forty-seven USC 332C7. So Cheryl, can you move to the next slide, the FCC orders? The first one is a moratorium order. It basically says the city cannot say no and deny access for an indefinite period of time for wireless providers. You have to accept application, and you can't really use what we normally use to study the issue, which is a temporary moratorium. Any of those types of things are, by their definition unlawful, and would be preempted by, by these regulations. The second part of the FCC's action was adopting what's called the small cell order, and it created a broad regulatory classification for what the FCC defines as a small wireless facility. It set certain size limitations like Cheryl mentioned, height, volume, and that sort of thing. It also adopted a national standard for an effective prohibition. That's separate rules, so that if you qualify as a small wireless facility, there are other sets of rules that you have to, you have to pay attention to, to avoid an effective prohibition. In the same order, they also adopted faster shot clocks, that timeframe within which the city has to act on these types of applications. It further limited pole attachment fees and limited the scope of this, the city's authority to adopt certain aesthetic regulations. Next slide, Cheryl. So this is the FCC's pretty wordy definition of what a small cell, small wireless facility is. It boils down to what Cheryl said. It's about, you know, structures fifty feet in height, antennas that are three cubic feet in total volume, and accessory equipment that does not exceed twenty-eight cubic feet. So Cheryl, if you go to the next slide. This photograph of a Verizon 5G site is deployed right outside of my office, and it would squarely fall within that definition of a small cell. At the top of the pole are three panel antennas, each are less than three cubic feet, and there is essentially no other accessory equipment involved in this facility. It's just the antennas, but the radios integrated with those antennas to provide service for And so this would be subject to those, those special rules. And here's what those special rules are. Cheryl, if you go to the next slide. So any small wireless facility, the city can only charge for access to its poles a reasonable approximation of its objectively reasonable cost, and that those fees are no higher than the fees charged to similarly situated competitors in similar situations. What that means for our purposes is, is kind of unclear as to how we, how we arrived to that number. So the FCC adopted what's called a safe harbor license fee. And that safe harbor is $270 per pole per year, where the city can expect not to be challenged on that, on that number. We've used $270 as essentially, you know, placeholder for that license fee, given the relative difficulties in, in calculating exactly what the city's cost might be on a case-by-case basis. However, the master license does include a provision that would require full cost reimbursement if the city does find that it's spending more than $270 per pole per year in administering this license. The second set of rules that governs whether an effective prohibition would occur talks about aesthetic regulations. And these are not really the topic of our discussion here tonight, but I just wanted to lay out the full regulatory framework. And that if the city did adopt any additional aesthetic regulations, they'd have to be reasonable, which means technically feasible. There has to be no more burdensome than you'd apply to other types of infrastructure deployment. They have to be objective and published in advance. Cheryl, can you move to the next slide, please? The last thing the order does is adopt these faster shot clocks. So for a small wireless facility co-locations, which means any attachment to an existing structure, whether it's a building or a pole in the right-of-way, those have to be processed within sixty days, suit to nuts. It includes the licensing process, which is why we've got a master license in front of you that kind of expedites the city's ability to process the site license application and then proceed with a permit review, all within sixty days for a co-location. For brand-new facilities in the right-of-way, we're talking about ninety days. So suit to nuts, ninety days for a replacement pole or a brand-new pole slapped in the right-of-way. Again, a pretty fast timeframe that the master license is intended to help shepherd those applications through in a time that can, in the timeframe that can comply with those, those limitations. Any other type of facility we're talking about, private property, a freestanding structure, that rule hasn't changed. It's still a hundred and fifty days. So with that, I'd like to open it up to any questions that you have for me, or if you want to proceed with the public comment. I'd be happy to answer questions after that portion as well.
Councilmember Rodriguez, you have a, do you want to ask a question?
Yes, sir.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Thank you, sir, for that presentation. I have a lot of concerned residents that I've received emails and phone calls, and I have no idea what to tell them as far as their health and safety, but from what you've just explained and my reading of this contract and state and federal law, it kind of sounds like we don't have a choice. It's, it's more or less a formality that it's even coming before us. I do have a question with respect to the cost per fee. I understand that they have established, you know, a safe harbor. What is your experience with pushing the limits of that safe harbor? Because I would like to ask for more money.
Whenever you go beyond the safe harbor, the city has to be able to provide a justification for exceeding that number. So if the city can come up with, you know, something like a price quantity sheet that identifies the anticipated approximated staff hours, their fully burden rate, and figure out exactly what that cost per pole would be, then you can talk about exceeding that $270. But at this point in time, we just don't have that data. This is a kind of a fresh program, where the city has not previously required, has been required to be as cognizant of their, of the costs it takes to administer this type of program, because there, you know, the city was attracting a market rate before the FCC issued this order in 2018. So it would require a little bit of legwork to figure it out, which is why we've included that extra provision in the master license that requires, that allows the city to get full cost reimbursement if it starts to figure out that it's spending more money than $270 would provide.
Got it. Okay. What's your experience with other jurisdictions in Southern California? Do they just kind of, have they just been following suit with that recommendation? Or has any of them attempted to, or, you know, I don't know how, how many other cities have done this before us. Have they been able to ask for more money, or are you seeing that's pretty common?
The, I'd say the most common approach is to take the $270. We represent other cities in San Diego County, and that has been our recommendation. There are a few cities out there that have entered into agreements before the FCC order was adopted, so they're command, they're still able to command the market rate for those poles. But that wouldn't be much of a good comparison for what we're, what we're faced with today. I'm aware of some other cities in Los Angeles County that have gone, you know, somewhere in the range of three hundred per pole per year, but again, that was supported by an additional, not necessarily a cost study, but kind of a, that price quantity analysis that I mentioned before, that shows exactly the anticipated staff hours that it would take to administer this agreement on a per-pole basis. And that's really the limitation we're faced with. It's truly a cost recovery type of mechanism. It's not a revenue generating one, and that, that's requirement of federal regulations.
Got it. So just to clarify, if we all were to vote no today, what, what would the outcome be by this applicant? Like what would the, what would the outcome? They would just be able to go to the private market and put up stuff all over our city? Is that kind of the dynamic? Is that what you were saying?
If, if the city elects not to pursue a master license agreement for licensing its own poles, then the carriers are more likely to go try and stab a new pole in the right-of-way, right? One of their own, that they own, or to attach to existing utility infrastructure in the right-of-way, like SDG&E poles. And there are some reasons why we typically recommend that, that cities make their poles available, and one of them is primarily for aesthetics. Utility infrastructure in the right-of-way is made of wood. You can't route cables through that wood infrastructure. There are CPUC safety clearance requirements that requires standoff that, that make the equipment look more visible and, you know, frankly, look pretty ugly. City's streetlights are hollowed out. You can run communications lines through the middle of the pole. You can flush-mount the equipment to the side of the pole, and you can better integrate the antenna with the pole top. So all those things put together, it makes the city's poles an attractive aesthetic option. But in the alternative, if you don't, they're going to go look for uglier and more intrusive options. Denying the access to city poles does not stop the rollout of small cells within the city of Oceanside.
No, I understand that, but it gives the city more control, and I think it would be more expensive for the applicant to go the route of trying to find their own, and they would have to still go through our planning department for the installation of each pole. Is that correct?
It would still go through whatever the regulatory process the city has in place. I believe that's through the engineering division right now.
Yeah. And then, and then what are the limitations on what we charge them going that route?
If, there are, you would not be able to charge for access to the right-of-way writ large. The statewide franchise under section 7901 of the Public Utilities Code preempts the city's ability to just charge for general access to the right-of-way. The only thing we can charge for is for access to our own poles. So that's why we have that, that $270 in the master license agreement.
So they wouldn't have to pay for any review or, or application for a location, and no staff hours, nothing like that?
They would certainly pay for a permit review, yes. So they would pay a cost recovery permit review to the engineering division for poles on, for installations on SDG&E poles, or for their own new poles in the right-of-way, yeah.
Yeah. And in my mind, I think that would be a lot more than $270.
Well, the $270 is on top of the city's permitting fees. It's an, it's an extra fee. So the city would charge.
Oh, so you're, you're getting a permit fee as well, correct? Okay, got it.
Yeah. It's on top, it's on top of the permitting costs, which are a separate cost that would be administered by the engineering division.
Very good. Thank you very much. I have no other questions.
Councilmember Sanchez, do you want to have questions for?
Yes, I do. So with respect to the number of licenses per pole, is there a max?
I'm sorry, I missed that question, Councilmember Sanchez.
Yes. With respect to each pole, is there a maximum number of licenses per pole? Is it one per pole? Is it just, well, one cell company per pole, or are there, can there be multiple companies per pole?
Understood. It is, it is primarily going to be one carrier per pole. In, in our experience, the carriers don't like to share. So once there's one set of equipment up there, they don't want to put another set of antennas and radios on there. And then for aesthetic purposes, the city doesn't really, I don't think they, it's, it's not an aesthetic benefit to the city, because you have double the equipment. an aesthetic benefit to the city because you have double the equipment on a single pole. It makes it a little bit more intrusive. So the policy would be one carrier per pole.
It's not like it was before when cell towers actually used the same equipment. They just, they combined resources. It's not like that anymore.
There are carrier, infrastructure providers out there in the market that deploy what you would call a neutral host facility, where it's one set of equipment and multiple providers use it. But you just don't see it very much in an outdoor environment. Each carrier's network is different. They're more dynamic. It's hard, not every carrier has the same gap or service requirement that the next one does. You see those neutral hosts, those sharing of facilities, more often in indoor environments, like a hotel or stadium or an airport, where everyone essentially needs to cover the exact same hallway or the exact same gate or the concourse. But in the outdoor environment, sharing in the right-of-way is exceedingly rare.
So I heard and read about the city of Encinitas being able to kind of hold this at bay. Do you know anything about what happened in the city of Encinitas?
Yes. So the city of Encinitas adopted a regulatory policy that regulated the location and design of wireless facilities in the right-of-way. The item before the city council tonight is just a master license agreement that identifies the terms and conditions for access to city poles. It's not reopening the city's regulatory authority that the engineering division currently possesses and that they currently administer. With respect to, you know, broad bans in residential areas, school districts, high-risk fire zones, that policy does identify what are, you know, what they would call a set of restricted areas. But what is not as very clear on the face of that restriction is that there is a very broad exception attached to that policy. That basically says if the denial of a facility in a residential zone or a school zone would violate federal or state law, then the city would have to approve that facility. So the broad prohibition or restriction that I think is being picked up on by members of the community and even across the state, maybe even the country, is not actually a broad prohibition. It's a prohibition with a massive exception involved, where facilities are either going to routinely be accepted from that requirement, or if they are not accepted from that requirement, you can certainly expect a lawsuit from the carrier within 30 days. And there's another city that adopted an exception just like that, the city of Los Altos, and they're facing two lawsuits, one from AT&amp;T, one from Verizon right now, on that same type of exception process. So I don't want to sit here and say that the city of Encinitas' approach is not without some risk. It certainly is.
I see. And if there were a lawsuit, more than likely, cities would lose, and how much would, could that cost the city?
Oh, so, I mean, in just the lead-up to any sort of motion for summary judgment, we're talking, you know, $50,000 to $100,000. Going through full trial is beyond that. It's an incredible amount of financial liability.
So how often are the radio frequencies measured? And what entity ends up doing that? Is that an independent organization that does that? Like a watchdog? Could a watchdog do that?
So for...
They have to be within a certain limit determined by the FCC, right? And if they go over that, the radio frequency emissions?
Yes. The city can deny applications for violating the FCC's radio frequency regulations. If they don't comply, they don't comply, and the city has no obligation to approve those sites. If the city or members of the community were interested in getting those regulations changed, the only way to do that is to write to the FCC or write to your local members of Congress, your House of Representatives...
An act of Congress.
And your senators. But it is certainly a closed issue essentially for local governments.
Right. So we have very little discussion, or I should say, a city has very little discretion with respect to having them. They would have to abide by the limits set by the FCC with respect to radio frequency emissions. And how is that, who determines that? It's not them, right? Is there an independent organization that actually measures it periodically to let citizens know or the local city council know or local city government know that they are in violation?
The, so the city has essentially one bite at the apple on the initial deployment and then subsequent bites at the apple if the facility is ever modified. So on each application for a new facility, the applicant will be required to submit a comprehensive RF compliance report that demonstrates what are called worst-case modeling scenarios, where it assumes that all the power is jacked up to 11 and evaluates what the, you know, essentially the controlled access zone, the area in which you have to keep the public out for an indefinite period of time. Once they make that, you know, computer modeling simulation in a RF compliance report, and it shows that it will comply with FCC regulations, if it were operating at max capacity, which they do not, they want to reserve additional power and they never operate at max capacity, then the, you know, that facility would not be, cannot be denied on that basis. But then when the applicant comes in for any subsequent modifications, right, they want to change out a radio or upgrade the antenna, they would have to again submit another RF compliance report to demonstrate that that new equipment met those same standards that it passed in the first place.
So if, for example, a third party wanted to measure the frequency once installed, and they come up with a value that is higher than the FCC regulations, what would happen with that? If that information was provided to the city?
So there's one primary method of recourse, and the FCC has basically an online portal that you can submit complaints about concerns over radio frequency that's exceeding the FCC's regulations. And they potentially will investigate those claims. That's one way to do it. The other way to do it is to, in any condition of approval that the engineering division uses to attach to any permit, that condition of approval would say that you always have to be in compliance with applicable laws. And if it's found that the application or that the site, I'm sorry, is not in compliance with the FCC's regulations based on some sort of good cause, a wand test that, you know, someone shows on a calibrated RF measurement device, then the city could potentially, you know, revoke that permit or go through a revocation proceeding. So there are two ways to go about it, and one is at the federal level and one is through local conditions of approval.
And there would be an ability to get something done. It's not just they won't respond, right?
I'm sorry, I missed that question. It got a little fuzzy, Councilmember Sanchez.
In other words, something could be done if they exceeded the FCC limitations?
Exactly.
Okay. Last question.
You're correct.
Last question. The other discretionary action that we can take as a city is very limited, having to do with aesthetics, and we would have to have objective and published criteria in advance. And we have that. Is that true, asking of staff?
Yes, we do have that. We've had that published for the past 10 years for our other small cell agreements.
Okay, so even for the smaller ones?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Brief comments then. It is very, very difficult. We are in a position to, in a position to have to say yes unless we, unless we face federal lawsuits, and they are, as far as I understand, they are very costly, and the city would not be able to beat these in a court of law. And yeah, it would have to take an act of Congress to change this, which is unfortunate. This happened just two years ago, right? The new FCC regulation. So it is, it does put us in a really bad situation. I note that we had, most of the comments that we got were in opposition. I think we had maybe one that was in support. Thank you very much.
Mr. Navarro, I believe we have public?
Yes, we did. The city clerk's office received 26 comments regarding item number 13, all of which have been distributed to the city council and will be made available on the city's website. The following individuals wish for their comments to be read into the record. Our first comment is from Drew Andreyoff. I am writing in support of item 13. Despite various widespread claims and conspiracies that 5G towers will cause everything from cancerous tumors to COVID-19, there is no evidence to support these claims. In 2011, the World Health Organization's International Agency for Research on Cancer designated radio frequency electric magnetic fields under Group 2B classification, which is defined as limited evidence of carcinogenicity in humans and less than sufficient evidence of carcinogenicity in experimental animals. The rest of Mr. Andreyoff's comments will be made available on the city's website, and he is in support of approval. Our second comment comes from Suzanne Hume of CleanEarthForKids.org. The former president of Microsoft Canada, Frank Clegg, says that 5G is not safe. Additionally, IARC, International Agency for Research on Cancer, and other scientists are concerned about the safety of 5G. Since studies of 5G are lacking, we ask Oceanside to protect residents and not install cell towers near residential areas, parks, daycare, schools, or high-risk fire hazard areas like the city of Encinitas. Thank you. Have a great day. Suzanne Hume. Our next comment is from Diane Wolke. We will not be guinea pigs. Installation of 5G in Oceanside with its pesticide alley, highly contaminated waters, increasing urban heat island that now extends into the path of rising seawaters, and unmitigated high-density growth further compromises the health of humans and environment. Say no, or you will go in November. And she provided several links to websites, which are available on the public comment area of the city's website. Our next comment comes from Jane Marshall. In April this year, an appeal to the European Union from more than 180 scientists and doctors from 36 countries warned EU leaders about the harmful effects of 5G. Installation will lead to a massive increase in involuntary exposure to electric magnetic radiation, heating up human tissues, particularly the skin and eyes. 5G will substantially increase exposure to radio frequency electric magnetic fields on top of the 2G, 3G, 4G, Wi-Fi, et cetera, for telecommunications already in place. The rest of Mrs. Marshall's comments will be made available on the city's website. Our next comment is from John Botworf of CleanEarthForKids.org. 5G has not been tested for safety and should not be installed in Oceanside. Studies show possible link between cell towers and cancer. Please follow the city of Encinitas and create city policy to exclude cell tower installation near areas of high-fire hazard, daycare, schools, homes, and parks. John Botworf, CleanEarthForKids.org. Our final comment is from Carolyn Kramer. No money received for any agreement is worth the health and environment of our community. 5G towers have been rejected around the world and in our own San Diego communities. Please reject this environmental health risk to our community, which includes our children and grandchildren. Other cities in North County have rejected this. The rest of Mrs. Kramer's comments will be made available on the city's website, and that concludes the public comment.
Deputy Mayor Fowler?
Thank you. To the speaker, you described a pole outside your office that had three of Verizon's sites on it. Is that correct?
I'm sorry, what was that question? Was that directed for me?
Yes. Did you, you described a pole outside your office that had three Verizon sites on it? Is that correct?
Yeah, it's one Verizon site with three separate panel antennas. And I took those photographs, you know, during the installation process and then once after it was completed.
So there's a possibility of more than one on, one antenna on each site?
There is, there's a probability of more than one on each site. So it'll probably be anywhere from two to three antennas per pole.
Okay, thank you. As I had most of my questions answered earlier, the 28 cubic foot space that is for the utility itself, is there something that we can do to enforce graffiti on those, force them to police themselves for graffiti on those sites?
Yes, there is. And the master license actually expressly calls that out in Section 7. So if there's any graffiti on any of the equipment, they have to comply with the Oceanside Municipal Code abatement requirements for graffiti. A lot of this equipment can also be treated with a graffiti-resistant coating that helps reduce the likelihood that it can get tagged with graffiti.
Well, I'll move staff recommendation.
And I have a question for Mr. Mullen. In looking at the Crown Castle and AT&amp;T letter, they had some what appear to be non-substantive changes. How would you go about recommending we address those?
So what we're asking you to do is to approve the form of the agreement. We would like your authorization to negotiate minor non-substantive changes with the carriers if necessary, particularly in areas affecting indemnification or city liability that would not impact the city's substantive rights.
And I think that was part of your recommendation as well.
Yes.
I'll second that motion. We have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Sanchez, no.
With that, we'll go to item 14, which is approval proceed with the Phase 2 beachfront improvement feasibility study. Mr. Borrego, you're up.
The item before you is a request for city council authorization to proceed with a Phase 2 beachfront feasibility study to be funded by $400,000 in allocated assigned infrastructure Enhancing the beachfront has been an ongoing city priority for a number of years. Beginning in the early 2000s, various options for improving the aesthetics and functionality of the area have been considered. In 2006, the design firm of Wallace, Robertson, Todd, or WRT, was hired to develop a vision plan for the area extending from Breakwater to Wisconsin. A robust community engagement process culminated with the city council workshop that was held in August of 2007. At that workshop, direction was given to focus on priority improvements in the area between the Junior Seattle Beach Community Center and Seagate Drive. In addition, restroom facilities were prioritized throughout the study area. Unfortunately, progress on those improvements was slowed by a combination of the Great Recession and the loss of redevelopment, who had been taking the lead on these efforts. But nevertheless, the city did pursue several significant projects, including breakwater restroom projects at Breakwater, Sports Fisher, and Tyson Street. And in addition to that, the city council initiated Phase 1 beachfront improvements. You've seen several actions related to the Phase 1 beachfront improvements before you recently, and I'm pleased to say that the project is now under construction. The Phase 1 improvements essentially includes the remodel of the existing 1930s-era bathhouse into a police substation, a new staircase to Pacific Street with the viewing platform up top, the reconstruction of a sewer lift station, a completely remodeled plaza area, and a 14-stall restroom slash storage building, which also has some limited storefront space as well. The waterfront area is incredibly valuable public resource, benefiting both our residents and visitors alike. However, the area between the amphitheater and the community center has yet to be fully addressed. Improvements would complement ongoing public and private investment in the area, of course, in addition to some of the private investment, not the least of which is the Oceanside Beach Resort Hotel project, but also quite a bit of public investment going on in the area. As I mentioned earlier, we have our Phase 1 improvements and several other projects and the works that would directly benefit the area. The feasibility study is envisioned would explore possible upgrades to the amphitheater, the community center, and the public spaces in between. And I will note that staff fully recognizes the sense... Of course, that authorization would include a detailed scope of work and a more detailed budget plan as well. So with that, staff recommends that the city council authorize a Phase II beachfront improvement feasibility study to be funded by a $400,000 allocation from assigned infrastructure reserves. And that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Mr. Navarro, we have any public?
No public.
Deputy Mayor Fowler?
Thank you. I'd include both high schools. Just because they graduate there doesn't mean the students are any fewer. So I move staff's recommendation.
Councilman Sanchez?
Thank you. Thank you, and I first want to call out and thank Assemblymember Tasha Borner Horvath for her almost $8 million. That was what the price tag we had thought would be. It came in a little less than that, and then plus the price tag went up a little bit. But that certainly helped us get started on the improvements. And I do realize that concrete in the Pierre area is also a high priority. But I also want to thank the Walker Hayes families for their contributions to the city because this is public parkland. It was donated to the city of Oceanside by these families for the express use of the public, and this is all parkland. It's amazing that we, as a city, have this. There's no other place on the coast in San Diego County that has something like this. So I'm very excited about making sure that the public is very much involved. I would include, besides OHS, we are the best. I graduated there in '74 at the Band Shell, so of course, we have a very special place in our heart, OHS alum, for the Band Shell. But I would definitely make sure that we have a public panel and ensure that we do have... Because we have a lot of stakeholders. We do have, you know, the organizations that use their use of space. We have diverse communities that work with kids in, you know, athletic kind of things besides the surfing, which is, of course, critical to the use. But we have a number of organizations that use this space. The very public process, because I don't know when these limitations, restrictions are going to be lifted, I would certainly encourage staff not to hold any public meetings or public input, try to get public input during a time when it's late winter, excuse me, late fall, early winter, because we may have flu season and, you know, God forbid, maybe a season of COVID-19 should we not have a vaccine by then. So I definitely would want, you know, staff to be doing this at a time that is ripe for the public to be thinking of that, thinking of being able to do the public input. And a phased approach, I would love to, you know, once you address the really critical needs of, you know, the concrete, the crumbling concrete, the Band Shell would be a wonderful thing to address. That is certainly one of the main pieces of that puzzle that really does need work. I mean, it's... When we had... And hopefully, that would attract some activity during the summer, like summer concerts, something like that. So I'm very excited about that. So I understand that the timeframe is about maybe August that you would... That we would be before the council picking the firm that would be going through this?
Yes, August would be the absolute sinist... We were probably thinking more of the September timeframe.
September. And then this will be coming back sometime next year with the ideas to the council. Okay.
Yes.
Sounds good. Yeah, I'm gonna... Did you... You made the motion to...
He did.
Move it. So I'll go ahead and second it with the, you know, with those provisos that this be a very public process.
Please vote.
Thank you very much.
Motion approved, 5-0.
How many on 21 do we have? Well, we're not going to do them anyway.
21, we have 10 speakers, but I believe...
We're not going to do them. I mean, we got two minutes before. So we'll adjourn for... We will open the public hearing and start with disclosures.
Staff.
Staff. Staff. Vicki?
Honorable mayor and council members, my name is Vicki Gutierrez, and then the Acting Real Estate Manager in the Public Works Department, Property Management Division. The item before you tonight is the adoption of resolutions confirming diagrams and assessments for each of the following landscape maintenance districts for fiscal year 2020-21 and ordering the assessments to be levied for that year. Del Oro Hills, Douglas Park, Guajami Ridge, Marlado Highlands, Mission Meadows, Peacock Hills, Rantoh Hermosa, Santa Fe Mesa, Sunburst Homes, Sunset Hills, and Villa Del Rio are those districts. The city's landscape maintenance districts were formed pursuant to the authority granted by the Landscape and Lighting Act of 1972 of the California Streets and Highways Code. Each year, we're required to conduct a public hearing regarding the proposed assessments to be levied within the districts. The assessments within the districts will remain the same for fiscal year 2020-21 as they were in the previous fiscal year, except for the exception of Douglas Park, Guajami Ridge, Rantoh Hermosa, and Vista Del Rio. Those will receive a CPI adjustment of between 2% and 2.3%. The proposed assessments identify will... Within the engineers' reports, were used to pay the cost within each of the 11 districts for fiscal year 2020-21. This concludes my presentation. Staff recommends that council approve the item before you for the 11 landscape maintenance districts for fiscal year 2020-21, ordering the assessments to be levied, and approving the engineers' report. I'm available to answer any questions that you may have.
Any public?
No public.
I move staff approval, recommendation, I mean. We have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
We'll go to 16, which is adoption of resolutions regarding the citywide lighting district. I'm going to open the public hearing and start with disclosures.
Staff.
Staff.
Staff only?
No.
Staff.
Okay. Honorable mayor and council members, the item before you is the adoption of resolutions approving the engineers' report confirming the diagrams and assessments for ordering the assessments to be levied for fiscal year 2020-21 for the Oceanside Lighting District, Assessment District 2-1991. The Oceanside Lighting District was formed in 1991 pursuant to the authority granted by the Landscape and Lighting Act of 1972 of the California Streets and Highways Code. Again, we are... Each year, council is required to conduct a public hearing regarding these proposed assessments to be levied within each district. Since the formation of the lighting district in 1991, the district assessments being levied have remained the same. There have been no increases. The total assessment to be levied by the lighting district for fiscal year 2020-21 will be $1,660,030. This concludes my presentation. Staff recommends that council approve the item before you for the 11 landscape maintenance districts for fiscal year 2020-21, ordering the assessments to be levied, and approving the engineers' report. I'm available to answer any questions that you may have.
Any public?
No public.
I move staff approval, recommendation, I mean. We have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
We'll go to 16, which is adoption of resolutions regarding the citywide lighting district. I'm going to open the public hearing and start with disclosures.
Staff.
Staff.
Staff only?
No.
Staff.
Okay. Honorable mayor and council members, the item before you is the adoption of resolutions approving the engineers' report confirming the diagrams and assessments for ordering the assessments to be levied for fiscal year 2020-21 for the Oceanside Lighting District, Assessment District 2-1991. The Oceanside Lighting District was formed in 1991 pursuant to the authority granted by the Landscape and Lighting Act of 1972 of the California Streets and Highways Code. Again, we are... Each year, council is required to conduct a public hearing regarding these proposed assessments to be levied within each district. Since the formation of the lighting district in 1991, the district assessments being levied have remained the same. There have been no increases. The total assessment to be levied by the lighting district for fiscal year 2020-21 will be $1,660,030. This concludes my presentation. Staff recommends that council approve the item before you for the Oceanside Lighting District's Assessment District 2-1991, confirming the assessments to be levied for fiscal year 2020-21 for the Oceanside Lighting District, Assessment District 2-1991. The Oceanside Lighting District was formed in 1991 pursuant to the authority granted by the Landscape and Lighting Act of 1972 of the California Streets and Highways Code. Again, we are... Each year, council is required to conduct a public hearing regarding these proposed assessments to be levied within each district. Since the formation of the lighting district in 1991, the district assessments being levied have remained the same. There have been no increases. The total assessment to be levied by the lighting district for fiscal year 2020-21 will be $1,660,030. This concludes my presentation. Staff recommends that council approve the item before you for the Oceanside Lighting District's Assessment District 2-1991, confirming the assessments, ordering the assessments to be levied for the fiscal year 2020-21, and approving the engineers' reports. I'm available for any questions that you may have.
Deputy Mayor Fowler?
I move approval.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
With that, we will go to item 17, which is a series of actions regarding the Alta Oceanside Mixed Use Project, and we will open the public hearing and start with disclosures.
I've had staff, public. We've had a number of emails and contact from the public in the last couple of days. And did I say the applicant? The applicant, too.
Staff, public, and the applicant, and neighboring property owners. I had met with the applicant initially before the lockdown and then a conference call and a number of emails from residents of the nearby area.
Staff, public, the residents that live next door, the applicant. I've spoken with the applicant twice, and I'm very familiar with this parcel, the purple church.
Staff, public, and applicant.
Mr. Navarro, I understand the applicant is going to be on the phone. Are they set up for that at this point?
I believe so. There's 11 people on the call right now. So if the applicant is on, can they unmute their microphones? Or if there's a possibility, they can? Looks like somebody did unmute themselves, so I believe the applicant is on the line.
Okay, and then with that, we will go to Mr. Hunt.
Good evening, mayor and council members. I'm Jeff Hunt, city planner, and I'm substituting for Richard Greenbauer tonight, who was called to active duty regarding the COVID virus. So I may not know the projects as well as he would, but I'll do the best I can, and we have a lot of staff support. We have staff from housing, engineering, and we should have fire. In addition to that, we have the consultant on our conference call, and they have a team of their staff as well. So this project is the Alta Oceanside Mixed Use Project. It involves a tentative map, a development plan, and regular coastal permit. It's located on a 5.3-acre lot at the intersection of Coast to Pacific and Coast Highway. It involves the demolition of two commercial buildings and three outbuildings and the construction of a five-story mixed-use building consisting of 309 apartment units and a little over 5,400 square feet of commercial space. The project does involve a request for a density bonus due to the 26 units that are being reserved for very low-income households. A little bit of background, the site, the address, is 939 North Coast Highway. It's the current site of the main attraction, adult business. It also has some vacant buildings on the site. It's zoned D-7B, which is intended for a mix of commercial and recreational uses. Mixed use is allowed with a... Pardon me, mixed use is allowed in that zone. It is also... Well, the adjacent zoning is commercial on the north, east, and south, and then residential to the west. D-7A is the residential district. It is a little over a mile from the transit center. The site currently has an approved project on it, a Seacliff Terrace mixed-use consisting of 52 units and some commercial square footage. This was approved back in October of 2014, and time extensions have brought that to the deadline of June 19, 2020. In regard to general plan policies, the project is consistent with the redevelopment plan policies to revitalize the downtown area, to eliminate blight deterioration. It's also consistent with a maximum dwelling unit cap of 5,500 units. Regarding the housing element, it's consistent with the housing element policy that housing be made available to current and future residents of our city. It's also consistent with the land use element and that the conflicts have been minimized with adjacent uses. And finally, it's consistent with our coastal zone. There's no impacts to access resources or views. The zoning standards, because it's a mixed-use plan, the zoning standards can be established with the mixed-use plan. I won't go through all of these. I know it's a little hard to read. Probably the biggest one is the density, and that's 58.2 dwelling units per acre. This is per the state 35% state density bonus. The building height is a maximum of 65 feet, and then there are elevators and staircases that are allowed to go above that per the height exceptions. And then the parking is 490 spaces required. They're providing 528. You can see the landscaping and the open space. In addition, the project meets the standards for mixed-use plan. It has superior design, adequate services, adequate capacity, et cetera. So as I mentioned, the project does involve a request for a density bonus. I'll go through this a little bit so you understand that there's 26 out of the base units, out of the 229, that are going to be reserved for very low income. That's our lowest-income category, 50% of AMI. Very hard category to meet, generally speaking, for cities. As a result of that, they get a bonus of 35% on top of what the base density would allow. So the base density's 229, 35%, you add 81, and you get 309 units. Because these are rental units, they have to be available for rent for 55 years. The density bonus allows the applicant to request waivers, and these must be granted except in certain very specific instances, and I'll get to that in a minute. The two incentives that they're requesting is one is relief from the 45% daylight plane, which was measured at 12 feet high. It starts at 12 feet high. And then the other is relief from the parking space dimensions. If there's an obstruction with... Depending on the space, there's certain requirements, and they're asking for relief from both of those. The incentives must be based on actual cost reductions for affordable housing, and we think that's clear. Again, the city has little discretion to deny a density bonus. We can deny it if, only if, there's a quantifiable impact based on an objective public health standard. That's the only instance. In addition to those waivers, the density bonus law allows a parking reduction, which likewise must be granted. So I'll take you through the parking statistics. The base zoning would require 638 spaces. The density bonus would actually drop it to 490 spaces, but we have a local coastal plan policy that only allows it... plan policy that only allows a 10% reduction. So when you measure the peak parking and you take a 10% reduction, there would be required 526, and they are proposing 528. Staff is comfortable with the parking reduction due to the proximity to the downtown services. It's not within a half a mile of the transit center, but it's .65, it's not that much further. And I would like to note that our zoning ordinance has several provisions for parking reductions that staff and applicants often work together to take advantage of. There's a collective parking provision, a parking study, inclusionary housing, et cetera. So here's a site plan. It's a little hard to see, but you can see along North Coast Highway, there's retail and then common spaces for the tenants, leasing area, library, retail, restaurant. There's also, you can see the alcoves or, or common areas that open up into the building, both along the south side and then one area on the east side. And then the parking is in the back, accessed from the north. Here's some elevations. One of the comments, and I'll get to the DAC comments in a minute, but one of the comments was that the upper elevations of the building should be enhanced. You can see the lower left is the proposal as it went to DAC, and then the revised elevation is up at the top of this slide. There was also a comment, though not a condition, regarding access and people going in off Coast to Pacifica and going down too far, and as a result, the applicant has included a turnaround. There's an existing turnaround, and they're going to keep that. At one point, they were talking about not, they were talking about redesigning it, but they're going to keep that in order to prevent traffic from going too far and impacting the neighbors. For SEQA, there was an environmental, environmental impact report. It showed potentially significant impacts that were mitigated below significant on biological, cultural soils, noise, and air resources. However, there were unavoidable impacts regarding transportation. These could not be mitigated below significant, and there's two segments of Coast Highway that are listed there in the slide. As a result, we need to do a, pardon me, we need to adopt a statement of overriding considerations because of capacity cannot be increased in those areas due to right-of-way existing buildings, et cetera. So we cannot mitigate those transportation impacts. Regarding public input, notice was sent to a 1,500-foot radius. There was also meetings with Seacliff and Miramar neighbors and the In-N-Out business. The downtown advisory committee reviewed this on April 22. There were 22 messages, comments received, all were in opposition. The DAC nonetheless recommended approval with a seven-to-one vote. They did ask for two conditions with their approval, and those conditions involve, again, looking at enhancing the upper floors of the exterior building, and as I showed you, those exteriors have been improved. They also asked that the applicant hold a conversation with staff regarding contributing to the roundabout at the intersection, and staff has analyzed that impact. There is no project impact to that intersection, and therefore, there's no basis for, to require a contribution. And with that, staff recommends the community development commission adopt a resolution certifying the final environmental impact report, adopting the MMRP, and adopting SEQA findings and the statement of overriding considerations, and to adopt a resolution approving the tentative map development plan, regular coastal permit, and the request for density bonus. And with that, I'd be happy to entertain any questions.
Thank you. At this point would be the time for the applicant's presentation. You have 20 minutes total, including rebuttal.
This is Ann Gunter of the Lightfoot Planning Group, representing the project applicant. Wood Partners is a national leader in multifamily real estate development, with a number of properties managed and developed in California. They have focused on infill locations to provide quality living options in core, urban, gateway cities, and are excited to bring this project to Oceanside. This is one of the largest contiguous sites in downtown. It currently includes the main attraction, some old commercial buildings, and the vacant land behind them, part of which is the previously approved Seacliff Terrace site. As you know, there have been efforts to redevelop these properties for many years. The Alta project has been able to consolidate all of these properties and is now in a position to move forward with the goal to revitalize this part of downtown. The entire building frontage along North Coast Highway is designed to activate the streetscape and pedestrian area along this corridor with commercial space, a public plaza area, leasing office for the apartments, and a library space with a conference room and co-work space for the residents. The architecture at the street level incorporates high-volume ceilings with extensive windows and glass entry doors for a commercial appearance that will provide visibility for future business tenants. Stone veneer accents and horizontal banding are used to further differentiate the commercial spaces of the building. There will be public street and sidewalk improvements, including on-street parallel public parking spaces and broad landscaped sidewalk areas that flow into the public plaza space. In order for public plaza to have regular activity, it will be the main pedestrian access from the parking garage to the commercial uses and to the leasing center, which includes a mail and package center. It will be an amenity area for the commercial tenants, and with connection to the front entry of the leasing center, will have regular pedestrian use within this space. The building includes areas for residents to enjoy outdoor recreation and relaxation with three resident courtyards and a fifth-level view deck. In addition to the extensive shared open space areas, private outdoor living space is also provided for residents on their individual balconies and patios. This slide shows the second fire access on the south side of the building. In one of our early meetings with fire staff, they asked us to incorporate provisions that could enhance fire response to the adjacent mobile home park, which doesn't have any hydrants inside the park. In order to do this, the fire lane was extended near the boundary to accommodate the ladder truck. There will be two gates for firefighter access through the new property line fencing to allow firefighter hose pull into the mobile home park from the project's new onsite hydrants and stand pipes. These locations were coordinated between the fire staff and mobile home park ownership based on available access and clearances within the mobile home park. The architectural design is contemporary, simple, and sophisticated. The materials are used to define the building facade with clean lines to provide visual organization to the building, using vertical and horizontal relief, varied building materials, and window orientation for both interest and articulation. The color shadings are used to emphasize the hierarchy of masses and planes. An important part of the Alta project is that it responds to the city's overall need for housing units, including very low-income affordable housing. The 26 affordable units will be built to the same standards as the market rate units. All units will have the same finishes, interiors, appliances, and amenities, with a range of floor plans distributed throughout the building. These visual simulations show how the building will be seen from nearby areas. The first is the view from Interstate 5 at the 76 off-ramp. You can see the welcome sign and In-N-Out with the new building beyond. This next is from Coast Highway, looking at the La Quinta and the main attraction in the existing view, and then the new Alta building. This is an eye-level view along North Coast Highway at the front of the building. Planting is designed to complement the building facade and enrich the pedestrian human-scale Since DAC, changes have been made in the street facade to address their concerns about adding more residential character to the upper levels, as shown here. We appreciate staff's work with us in reviewing these revisions so they could be incorporated into the project before this hearing. I'm going to spend a bit of time on traffic now. This has been a concern of the neighbors since our initial meeting with them, which was held even before the project was filed with the city. Their concerns helped define the issues studied in the traffic report and affected the ultimate design and solutions for improvements on, to the streets to be built by the project. The Seacliff condos have access easement rights across Coast to Pacifica Way, but the private street is owned by this project. It has long been planned that the properties between Coast Highway and Seacliff will use this street for access when developed. The Alta project will use Coast to Pacifica as its primary access, with a new garage entry from Coast to Pacifica into the garage. Seacliff has expressed a number of concerns about this, and the project has responded to them where feasible. As an example, Seacliff had concerns about having long stacking to exit onto Coast Highway with only the single eastbound lane. So the project design was changed to add a second eastbound lane to allow for separate right and left turn lanes at the intersection. They also asked that the south driveway, where the fire lane is located, be used for additional or alternate access to the Alta project. This was studied and reviewed with a city traffic engineer, but the proximity to other driveways and the right-turn lane from 76 made this unacceptable. This slide shows the many commercial driveways along this stretch of Coast Highway that serve multiple existing businesses. The In-N-Out across the street has two existing driveways located north and south of Coast to Pacifica Way, and the existing center two-way left-turn lane has been problematic with conflicting left turns between Coast to Pacifica and the southern In-N-Out driveway. As staff noted, the traffic impact identified as significant for the project occurs on this segment of Coast Highway. I want to clarify that there are no intersection impacts from the project. The segment impact is due to the width of the street, and the only way to reduce that impact is to increase capacity, which would require widening the road and adding lanes. That would conflict with the Coast Highway plan, the circulation element, and it would impact many existing businesses, thus was determined to be infeasible. However, the project will be making improvements to help improve the traffic flow and reduce some of the existing conflicts. The project will provide additional street dedication along Coast Highway frontage to meet current city design standards for travel lanes and bike lanes. Consistent with the Coast Highway plan, a pedestrian crossing with bulbout, continental crosswalk, and flashing beacons will be provided at Coast to Pacifica Way. Other changes and improvements include providing a dedicated northbound left-turn lane at the Coast to Pacifica Way intersection and eliminating a portion of the two-way left-turn lane. Raised medians will be installed on both sides of the left-turn lane, and signage indicating left-turn restrictions will be located at the southerly In-N-Out driveway. The project will construct a refuge median for left-turning vehicles on Coast to Pacifica Way and will add keep-clear pavement markings at the intersection. This was a specific request by Seacliff to help during peak traffic conditions. As mentioned earlier, Coast to Pacifica Way will be widened in response to Seacliff's comments to allow for two separate left and right-turn lanes approaching Coast Highway. In combination, these measures will improve traffic flow and efficiency through this segment of Coast Highway by organizing movements and vehicle queuing within the designated street width per the general plan and the Coast Highway plan. Another concern raised by Seacliff and discussed at DAC was the lack of a place to turn around with the new project. A revised design was provided to staff following DAC that would modify the garage entry drive so that a turnaround can be made without entering the driveway. Along with adding signage to clarify that there is no through-vehicle access or turnaround beyond that point should help discourage any non-Seecliff traffic from continuing down the road. The Alta project includes transportation demand management strategies as components of the project design. In addition to the inherent mixed-use components of the project, these fall into several additional categories, as summarized on this slide. The project has closed transit access, provides bicycle facilities and improvements, pedestrian amenities to promote walkability, and resident amenities that support telecommuting. This project will bring economic benefits, including construction jobs, fees of over $5 million to the city, plus $1 million to the Oceanside School District, along with the ongoing increase in property tax value associated with new development. Alta will also be funding ongoing public safety operational costs. The project has agreed to form a public safety CFD for the city, which will pave the way for future development projects to annex in and similarly pay for ongoing public safety The Alta project will add new apartment homes at market and very low-income affordable rates and new commercial space along Coast Highway. The combination of uses, high-quality architecture, and landscape are designed to be another appealing draw into downtown Oceanside for visitors and provide future residents with a contemporary design and appealing amenities for these apartment homes. This project is an opportunity to continue revitalizing this portion of downtown, and we ask for your support. Our project team is available for questions, and we would like to reserve the balance of our time for any rebuttal. Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, Mr. Navarro, I believe we have public.
We have public on this item. On item number 17, the city clerk's office received 11 comments, which were forwarded to the council and are available on the city's website. Of these 11, these three individuals wanted their comments read into the record. Our first comment is from Kevin T. Byrne. Regarding Agenda Item Number 17 of the City Council Meeting for May 20, 2020, I urged the City Council to adopt these agenda items. Thank you, Kevin T. Byrne. Our next comment is from Joel Morales. Start the timer there, okay. While the addition of In-N-Out to downtown Oceanside is applauded, I am highly concerned about additional vehicle and pedestrian congestion that will be imposed on North Coast Highway due to the Alta Oceanside project and the new hotel plan just north of Coast to Pacifica Way. The current amount of traffic and congestion gives me great concern when driving home from work each day, especially during the summer months when traffic spikes. Before voting on the Alta project, I implore each member of the commission to drive along North Coast Highway during rush hour to experiences to challenge firsthand. Make a left turn onto Coast to Pacifica Way, make a left turn out of In-N-Out while enjoying fresh hand-cut french fries, of course. Please, for the sake of everyone's safety, address current road hazards for the betterment of Oceanside locals and visitors before adding additional risk. Thank you, Joel H. Morales. Our next comment comes from Scott Ashton on behalf of the Oceanside Chamber of Commerce. On behalf of the Oceanside Chamber of Commerce, I am writing to express support for Wood Partners' Alta Oceanside Mixed Use Project on North Coast Highway. Part of the chamber's housing creation policy platform is to support growth in transit-friendly areas, which also supports the goals of the city's climate action plan. The Alta project will be located approximately .65 miles from the NCTD Transit Center, allowing for easy access to a variety of public transit options. The Alta Oceanside project will contribute to Oceanside housing stock, with 283 market-rate units along with 26 units of onsite very-low-income housing. Having worked at the chamber for nearly 24 years, I am excited to see such a vibrant project come to a very blighted area of our community. It is encouraging to see positive growth begin to extend to the normal limits of downtown Oceanside. We ask that the council support the recommendations of city staff and the downtown advisory committee, and the rest of the chamber's letter will be made available on the city's website. And that concludes public comment for item number 17.
Thank you. With that, does developer have any rebuttal comments?
Thank you, Mayor and council members. This is Ann Gunter with the Lightfoot Planning Group. We don't have anything specific to add relative to the comments that were read aloud. Should the council have any questions on any of the other comments that were provided, I would be happy to address those items.
Well, thank you. And then with that, we will close the public input portion. Deputy Mayor Feller.
Thank you. This has been kind of a, a dream come true to end up with something so outstanding to replace some- something that isn't. I had a question about what would, let's see, health and safety standards. What did I write that for? No, that was not. I think this is a project that helps us meet our arena numbers for the city's allocation of 5,400. These are apartments, probably really good apartments. I think the idea that the uses there are less than what, you know, I would like to see on that north end of town. I just want to take into consideration the projects that have come along over the years that I'm sure our predecessors on the council all were yelling, getting yelled at for anything new that they did downtown. I'm sure that even when they built this city hall 30-plus years ago, they were kind of up in arms over some of the issues. We have a huge project down on Pacific Street, North Coast Village, that I know that wasn't popular, replacing probably ocean views and that type of thing down there with the same type of thing. It's always the person that is last in seems to take the worst heat, and the efforts that have gone into this mean a lot to me. I think they've, they are going to make a statement with this development. I think their attitude towards taking something that isn't good for the community and replacing it with something that is, is very important for the future of Oceanside. These will be people that, at some point, will be shopping, dining, everything that we ask people to do in a downtown, so. And the replacement of the last questionable use, one of the last two questionable uses in the city's downtown, is, it's pleasing to me to have been able to be a part of eliminating both of them. So I'm going to move staff's recommendation. I'm glad to see that they are going to be, be involved with a CFD for the future, and I would just move that we adopt the resolutions as stated.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Thank you. So I want to first thank the applicant for meeting with me a couple times. In fact, worked with the applicant during the first project that is right next to this. And they shared with me, the applicants, shared with me their long history of contacting the land, the property owner, about moving the main attraction off and doing something really positive there. And so I was really excited when I heard that they had, were able to acquire ownership of the property, and it did take, I think he said, 20 years to do that. There's a lot of really good positives of this project that I have to say, before I spoke with the residents, it was just really fantastic. High-density belongs the downtown area. It really, really does. It's near public transportation. And the fact that there are 26 affordable housing units that are indistinguishable from the market rate is just phenomenal, that they be very low and they would be reflective of the one-bedroom, two-bedroom, whatever they have, is pretty cool. And I hope that we, that there will be a trend that will be continued as we go forward. And, and we did talk about public art, and it was something that the applicant was willing to look at, but then the applicant explained to me that staff is initiating a funding district to pay for public safety, and so they'll be the first ones to do that. So basically, it was, well, you know, we've committed to this, so we're not going to be able to do the public, public art piece, but I really appreciate it. They actually contacted the Arts Commission and were considering that. The unmitigable impacts were something that I hadn't really thought about, but then as I talked to the residents, I, it was really, really clear that it's something that I was hoping maybe staff would be able to address a little more. First of all, there were some concerns about pedestrian safety because apparently cars drive down there, and they felt that there were some view obstructions, and I believe the applicant and staff worked out a resolution. Is that correct? That there would be signage as well as a definite way that people walking down there would not feel unsafe, because obviously this has to be very pedestrian-friendly. I'm looking at some, I'm having looks back, like, really? Did you want someone to talk about this? Is anybody here to talk about that? Yeah? Just really briefly, because your time is also on my time.
Is this on? Yes, it is. Honorable Mayor, Councilmember, Councilmember Sanchez, yet the path down from Coast Highway down to the-
Costa Pacifica Way, right?
Yeah, Costa Pacifica Way, exactly. There is going to be a sidewalk there, so there is a pedestrian path that leads all the way down there, and it's a sidewalk.
And it's a nice sidewalk. It's not like-
It's not like, it's not asphalt. It's a concrete curb and gutter sidewalk that goes, leads down there.
Very good. Thank you. The, so there was, one of the big concerns about the, from the, from the residents, where the ingress egress, because they felt that something is massive, and I guess it does tower in terms of the elevation issues, right? It does tower, so they, the amount, the number of units, they felt that, boy, if we could have ingress egress off of two roads rather than just one road, that would help us be able to get in and out. And I think staff did look at it, they looked at it, in terms of flipping the design of the, of the whole project so that it could have, you know, In-N-Out, not the, not the hamburger place, but In-N-Out of the project. And my understanding is it just was not feasible. Is that correct, staff?
Councilmember Sanchez, honorable mayor, councilmembers, can you clarify your question again? Are you talking about Coast Highway and the ingress and egress?
The two main projects there combined using one, you know, one access road.
I see what you're saying. Instead of using, right, having an access that comes out onto Coast Highway. I know that the, that the consultant and the traffic consultant studied that very closely, but it was, that is their right-of-way, is that access, and it was more feasible to have that one access versus two because of all the impacts that would take place there on Coast Highway.
The existing problems with traffic at, at that juncture included In-N-Out, traffic going in and out of the, now I'm talking about the In-N-Out burger place. And so, and that's with cars queuing to come in. It's a very popular place. Hey, I love the place myself. I try not to go there too often, you know, burgers with cheese, right? But cars queuing in, and then sometimes the truck would park in the middle, in the median. So that was also addressed. Is that correct?
Yes.
And how was it, just briefly, because I'm on the time here?
It was addressed where the consultants had reached out to In-N-Out, and there was some, I know, discussion with them, and they had, and they were made aware that that median was not going to no longer be used for their purpose of unloading.
Well, they, they really couldn't stop there, right? They were sighted, I think?
Yeah, and so they would have to be on-site now.
And I guess, I think the last question I have, well, okay, one, one other thing. So with respect to the, the, the city's plan for, for choking down the road, and there's a median there, but it's, it's really just that. It's one, one road, one way, one road, the other, one way, and then the median, right? So it's just three. So there's no, there's no real way to increase that area in terms of roadway to facilitate and ease the traffic?
No.
Right? Yeah. So the last question I have is this, and I, and I, and I actually just got it on my email, and that is, will this project be excluding short-term vacation rentals?
Mayor and councilmembers, I don't believe there's anything that prohibits it, so we would take a look at it individually. It'd have to go through the permitting process.
Okay. Because we are trying to design for people to live in the downtown that supports the businesses, but also more than anything meets our housing requirements. So commercializing any of these reduces our housing stock, does it not?
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, this is Ann. May I address that?
Hi, Ann.
The applicant has confirmed to me that they do not use their apartment building for short-term rentals. They are intended for full-time residents.
Fantastic. There you go. Well, thank you very much, Ann.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll say that, you know, when you have an idea of what you want downtown and then, you know, the practicalities, what I told the applicant was, this is a forward-thinking project. I anticipate that in the future, and even maybe probably, you know, very near future, we'll be doing a lot of working from home and telecommuting and, you know, not going and hitting the road out to the freeway at eight, you know, seven o'clock, five o'clock, six o'clock, seven o'clock to get to work. And at some point, this will be a very modern, I mean, it is now, we just have this transition that concerns me, and how we get people in and out. And I'm not talking about the burger place there. Moving people so that we don't have a lot of creation of greenhouse gas by having people stall and things like that. But I want to thank again the applicant for working with me and sharing with me the, the parts of the project as it was going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Rodriguez?
I just want to second Deputy Mayor Jack Feller's motion. No further comment.
Councilmember Keim?
I think my last year and a half on council, one consistent theme I've heard from my colleagues is we need affordable housing, and we do in Oceanside, and it's a challenge. And we're going to have 26 extremely affordable units in a great location, underutilized piece of property that are going to be, just want to confirm, available to individuals with half the median income?
Mayor and councilmembers, the state density bonus requires that they be available for 55 years. At this income level, it'd be 50% of AMI, the area median income.
Okay. And I think this is important. This is, you can see the ocean from here. It's a fantastic piece of property. Another challenge right now is as we do infill, you're going to have challenges with any piece of property with ingress and egress and traffic. I've talked to the applicant, I've talked to staff, and I think that's been mitigated. But it's very easy to sit here and say we prioritize affordable housing, we want to get affordable housing done, but this is when we show we want to, is when we approve these projects and deal with these challenges. So I think it's going to be good for our city. I think it's a good location, and I'm happy to support it. Thank you.
Thinking, I will be supporting the project. I just want to make one comment in regard to the CFD, and it's not as specific to this project as, and I know the city's going to initiate the study, but this will be the project that actually goes forward with the initial implication of it. And that is, the CFD, to me, should only be applicable to those units that would, are above what otherwise would be allowed either by general plan or zoning, whether it's this project or any other project in the city. And so I think, and I think when you do the methodology and the apportionment, it needs, there needs to be a direct proportionality nexus to that. So to me, it would be only on those units that are above what would otherwise be allowed, or if there's a general plan change where you're adding residential to where, to a piece of property that hadn't had it before. So obviously, that'll be coming back in the future, but I just wanted to make that comment. And with that, we have a motion and a second.
Approve, 5-0.
Go to item 18, which is adoption of a resolution approving, and other actions approving the Sunset, Sunsets Mixed Use Project. And we will open the public hearing and start with disclosures.
Staff, as well as applicant, we've heard from the neighbors, we've heard from others, some people that don't want palm trees, and so they want interesting comments, though. But it seems like a fairly popular project.
Staff, the applicant, and his consultants, as well as the public.
Staff, the applicant, and we've been receiving comments that just started coming today. One or the last several days.
Staff and the emails I received, and some public.
Staff, applicant, public.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Again, I'm Jeff Hunt, city planner, and again, I'm happy to substitute for Richard Greenbauer on this project, as he was called to act of duty to assist with the COVID virus. Not to be redundant, but in case somebody came in late, I don't know this project as well as Richard would, but we do have staff here to assist. We have engineering, and we have traffic staff as well, and again, we have our consultant with their team on conference call. So this project involves a Sunset Mixed Use proposal, including a development plan and a conditional use permit. It's situated on three parcels, which together equal a little less than one acre. It's at the intersection of Pierview Way and Horn Street. The site is Zone D3, which is intended for offices interspersed with mixed use. The adjacent zoning on all sides are commercial. A little bit of background, a project called Portola was previously approved for this site, consisting of six stories, mixed use with 15 condos and seven live-work units. The size of those units ranged upwards over 3,000 feet. That project came in at 43 units per acre, and the final time extension ran out in September of 2018. So this proposed project, the Sunsets, is for six stories, 76 apartments, and you can see the size is rather small comparatively to the Portola, at least, 600 square feet and then 850 square feet. It involves- and then 850 square feet. It involves the form-based, street-level, commercial uses, 1,500 square feet on Horn, wrapping around the corner a little, and then 715 square feet down on the southwest corner at Pierview and the alley. It also involves three parking levels, one being accessed from Horn, and the other two from the alley. Regarding general plan consistency, we believe it is consistent with the redevelopment plan to revitalize the downtown area, eliminate blight and deterioration, and it is consistent with a maximum dwelling unit cap of 5,500 units. Likewise, it's consistent with a housing element, which assures housing is available to current and future residents. And it is also consistent with a land use element, as it minimizes conflicts with adjacent uses. The mixed-use plan establishes development standards for the site. The density is 76 units, which equals 162 units per acre. This is only feasible due to the recently adopted action by this body that waived or eliminated the density cap. The height is a maximum of 65 feet with 10-foot projections allowed per our height exception ordinance. Setbacks are zero, but they do have to have a five-foot setback at 25% of any facade in order to provide for articulation. And then, there's open space, 206 square feet per unit, that's above the base requirement. And landscaping will be enhanced in the existing areas along the street and the right-of-way, the parkways. And then, there's actually going to be landscaping on the building itself. The Downtown Advisory Committee, which I'll talk about a little bit more in the future, found that rather attractive. As I said, the mixed-use plan sets the development standards and requires high-quality design. This building has integrated photovoltaic and rooftop solar. The photovoltaic is on the sides. It also has a vegetated vertical green wall and landscaping on the rooftop as well. The commercial storefront has glazing on both the east and the south elevations. And then, again, there's varied setbacks along the elevations for some articulations. Staff also is comfortable that findings can be made regarding the mixed use and the conditional use permit. The conditional use permit is for mixed use in the D3 zone. So, here's the pier, Pierview facade. You can see the common open space on the corner of Pierview and Horn, and then the waterfall, which will be also a green wall. And the photovoltaic is in the light green on this slide, and then the storefront glazing down in the corner of Pierview and the alley in purple on that slide. Here's the parking analysis. It is less than a half mile to the transit center, so it is within our transit-oriented district. There's a number of different parking spaces. I won't read them. You can read them for yourself, but you can see what's required is 168, and then they are providing 172 for vehicles. One compact, and then three motorcycles, and then 82 bicycles. Some of those are outside, and some of those are inside. To give some comfort on the height of the building, there was a contextual study performed. And as you can see from the slide, there's some approved seven- and four-story mixed-use buildings in the near proximity. And additionally, there's six- and seven-story buildings further back, and along with three, four, and five, pardon me, three, five, and six-story buildings. This view is looking southwest. Looking more northerly, there's three- and four-story multifamily residential buildings with a height up to 50 feet. Public input involved letters being sent within a 1,500-foot radius, and there were neighbor, there was a neighborhood and individual meetings that were conducted. The Downtown Advisory Committee reviewed this on April 22nd, where there were two letters, one of support and one in opposition. The DAC recommended approval, and if I will editorialize, I thought they were very pleased with the project for all the amenities that I just described. With that, staff finds the project is categorically exempt for an infill project per SEQA, including no significant traffic impacts, and we recommend this body adopt a resolution approving the development plan and the conditional use permit. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. At this point, we will have the applicant. You have 20 minutes, including time for rebuttal. Is the applicant on the phone?
Thank you. I'm on the phone, but I do have a PowerPoint presentation that I think staff is going to play for you. Mayor Weiss, council members, this is Ann Gunter of the Lightfoot Planning Group, representing the project applicant and owner of the Sunsets project. This project is the first to be brought forward since density caps were removed downtown to encourage additional units in this transit-friendly area. As shown on this slide, the property is located in the urban core and is at a prominent corner entering downtown. This building will help in reaching a critical residential mass to create a vibrant 24-hour downtown, and help in the ongoing transformation to be cleaner, safer, and more welcoming. In designing the Sunsets building, the applicant saw an opportunity to transform this key corner into a striking, modern, urban infill development that will activate this long vacant site. The project will provide 76 much-needed rental units, along with activated spaces along the streets to continue the existing commercial character in the area. The building design uses zero setbacks along the street frontages. That is typical for high-density downtown urban infill structures. This reinforces the pedestrian relationship to the commercial along the streets, and enhances the vibrancy and excitement of the downtown urban fabric. The Sunsets building incorporates a number of environmental sustainability features. The most visible is the building-integrated photovoltaic panels that shows a blue-gray grid on these elevations. These innovative panels are used as a vertical architectural element on the exterior walls, extending from above the first floor up to the cornice. They provide for a distinctive design, adding visual interest in the wall planes. They also greatly increase the amount of solar electricity to be produced on-site in combination with rooftop solar panels. The building includes other advanced features, including ultra-high-efficiency systems for heating, ventilating, air conditioning, and water heating. Uses vegetated green walls incorporated along the alley for screening of the parking levels, and rooftop landscaping. Using renewable and high-efficiency energy technologies reduces the building's carbon footprint and long-term cost to residents, which ultimately makes it more sustainable for everyone. The ground-level-facing Horn will include small, flexible commercial spaces and amenity spaces for the residents, such as a fitness area, meeting, and co-work spaces. The building lobby and management office will also be here. The architecture for this level incorporates extensive glass windows and entry doors for a storefront appearance. This is designed to provide public visibility to the activities and businesses inside, giving this area a commercial feel and pedestrian interest. The project design includes a corner plaza space at the intersection of Horn and Pierview that provides an area for art, murals, and informal seating to provide an open and welcoming corner. This also wraps the commercial design elements along Pierview Way, which has limited opportunities for commercial entries due to the sloping street and sidewalk. At the lower western end of the building, near the alley, an active space with a pet wash and laundry is provided, using large windows at the entry level, along with spandrel glass and second-level glass to visually extend the commercial look along this street. A water element is provided between the window glass on the corner plaza area to provide added interest along the sidewalk. This is a section view through the building, with Horn Street on the right and the alley on the left. The residential unit levels are highlighted on levels two to six. The second floor is the first residential level. While not visible in this section, there is a central courtyard landscaped with planters and seating areas that are open to the sky and available for all residents as a relaxation and gathering space. This is in addition to the private balconies or courtyards that are attached to each unit. This highlights the main level, at grade with Horn. In addition to the commercial and amenity spaces, it has the uppermost parking garage level accessed from a driveway on Horn Street. It provides convenient parking for visitors, along with some resident parking. Access to the two lower parking levels is from the alley on the west side of the site. The parking levels are not interconnected to better manage parking and enhance privacy and security for the residents. This is parking level P2, which is at grade with the alley, but below grade at Horn Street. This level has resident parking, and includes the bicycle parking areas for residents. The lowest parking level is below the alley grade and accessed from a second entry off the alley that ramps down to this level for resident parking. Within the garage, tandem spaces are used for 68 of the 161 total spaces. All spaces in a tandem configuration will be assigned resident spaces. Commercial parking is allowed on streets in downtown. There will be 10 spaces available adjacent to the building where eight are required. These will be in the parallel spaces on Horn and the angled spaces on Pierview. The project will be adding three angled spaces on Pierview Way in place of an existing driveway curb cut that is no longer needed for this project. This slide shows an overhead view with the highly amenitized roof deck visible. There's a pool, areas for dining, media, games, and pet activities. The project design includes other areas for social gathering, with an intimate courtyard, lobby with coffee bar, and an indoor party room with a kitchen. These common areas are designed to complement the individual units and provide quality-of-life amenities to enhance the downtown lifestyle. There are also activity areas with the fitness center and yoga room, convenience amenities with co-work and conference spaces, dedicated parcel delivery and mailroom, and self-storage units, along with a large bicycle parking area to accommodate 76 bicycles. There are also purpose-oriented rooms for bicycle repair, music practice, arts and crafts, along with the pet washing and large-item laundry mentioned earlier. This new building will continue the transformation that is occurring in downtown Oceanside. A context study was prepared to illustrate the current surrounds of the Sunsets project, including some of the newer mid-rise buildings of four to eight stories, transitioning from the earlier lower buildings which exist in residential neighborhoods on blocks outside of the downtown district, both to the north and the south, and on some parcels remaining within downtown. We showed these images at DAC and got comments that they were helpful to see how this building fits within the overall progress being made downtown, so I wanted to review them with you also. This image shows the view directly west of the site as the land slopes down gradually towards the ocean. The existing six-story Oceanside terraces is on the left at A, and the seven-story Wyndham Resorts is at D. Several new buildings that have been constructed but aren't clearly visible in this image are Pierside North and South at B, the Beach Resorts Hotel at C, and Salt at F, that are all four to five stories. The nearby residential building at G is four stories and about 55 feet high. This includes some of the buildings from the previous image, and the shaded area are the blocks outside the downtown district to the north. This is more of the area to the north, with the Marina Towers in the background at about 148 feet high, and starting the transition to the newer multifamily buildings to the northeast of the project site. This is a better view of the new buildings to the northeast that are three and four stories, and shows part of the 10-acre Mission Square Shopping Center to the east of the project site. This is the rest of the shopping center, with Oceanside High School in the background, and the new school buildings that are about 42 feet high. And finally, the view to the south-southwest, showing the Oceanside terraces from the first image on the right at A. Two projects nearby have been approved but haven't begun construction. M is the seven-story Belvedere Project across from the high school. It's about 79 feet high along Horn and about 54 feet high at Clementine. And P is the recently-approved 901 Pierview Mixed Use Project at about 49 feet high. Additional existing buildings shown include two senior living buildings at N and O that are six and seven stories, and Ocean Lofts at R, that is five stories. This slide shows the Sunsets building from the intersection of Horn and Civic Center Drive for additional context. The Sunsets Mixed Use Development will transform this key property in downtown Oceanside. It will provide high-density housing and location-appropriate commercial spaces for the community. It will further activate this area with full-time downtown residents, provide extensive amenities to enhance their quality of life, encourage the use of transit, and reduction in car trips, that all leads to the enjoyment and convenience of living downtown. The project will implement city goals and policies, including those for housing, transit-oriented development, and environmental sustainability, and will contribute to the ongoing resurgence of Oceanside's urban core. Sunsets is an opportunity to help reach the critical residential mass needed to create a vibrant 24-hour downtown that is cleaner, safer, and more welcoming, and that supports downtown businesses. And we ask for your approval. Thank you for your attention. I'd like to reserve the balance of time for any rebuttal, and Howard Jacobs and I are both available, should you have questions.
Thank you. Mr. Navarro, we have public?
We do have public on this item. Under item number 18, we had eight public comments sent to the city clerk's office, which was distributed to council. These individuals wanted their comments read and to the record. Our first comment is from Arlene Hammerschmidt. "To be blunt, the iconic Oceanside feel is warm and welcoming. Irvinggill arches, mission tile roofs, beach cottage. Please insist developer redesign to one of these styles. This cold, hard, stark, hulking, massive-looking, ugly, unwelcoming thing is exactly why our city needs architectural design guidelines to maintain sense of place, knowing you're really in Oceanside. Keep Oceanside real. Well wishes. Choose from any one architectural styles from the Oceanside High School campus that is right across the street. That's real Oceanside and exemplifies the soul of our town. This thing will stick out like the sore thumb it is and be evidence of the city of Oceanside selling our soul." Thank you, Arlene Hammerschmidt. Our next comment is from Scott Ashton on behalf of the Oceanside Chamber of Commerce. "On behalf of the Oceanside Chamber of Commerce, I am writing to express support of Sunset LP's Sunsets Mixed Use Project in downtown Oceanside. Part of the Chamber's housing-creation policy platform is to support growth in transit-friendly areas, which also supports the goals of the city's climate action plan. The Sunsets project will be located approximately .5 miles from the NCTD Transit Center, allowing for easy access to a variety of public transit options. The Sunsets project will contribute to Oceanside housing stock with 76 much-needed market-rate units in our downtown area. These residential units will provide critical support to our downtown businesses that will need every possible advantage in the coming years to recover from the COVID-19 crisis. This project represents a prime example of the type of infill development that our community members have been asking for. The rest of Mr. Ashton's letter will be posted on the city's website." Our next comment is from Joan Bachmann. "I support the development as proposed. Please add canopy trees to the south side instead of the palms. There are over 5,000 palms in town. We are overrun with palms. They are self-seeding weeds in our lagoon and yards and expensive to remove. Plant canopy trees as shown on the east side. Regards, Joan Bachmann." Our next public comment was submitted via the Lightfoot Planning Group, and is from Tom Jeffrey. Mr. Jeffrey's comments are, "My wife and I own the two houses located adjacent to the north of the proposed Sunsets project. We wanted to let you know that we are familiar with the project through meetings and discussions with the applicant, and think this will be beneficial for the downtown. We support the project and urge your approval. Sincerely, Tom Jeffrey." And our final comment is from Kevin Byrne regarding agenda item number 18. "Regarding Agenda Item Number 18 of the City Council Meeting for May 20, 2020, I urge the City Council to adopt these Agenda Items." Thank you, Kevin T. Byrne. And that concludes the public comment.
Does the developer or their representative wish to address any of these comments at
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is Ann Gunter with the Lightfoot Planning Group. I would like to address the comments, including just a couple of them. In terms of Ms. Bachman's concern on the palm trees, the palms on Peer View Way are two of the large, very tall palms that kind of outline that iconic corridor down towards the water. They are not new palm trees. They are being retained along the frontage, and we are not able to add canopy trees along that edge due to existing utilities in the parkway, but we will be adding ground cover and shrubs to improve the parkway area next to the sidewalk. I would also like to touch base briefly. I know that there was a letter received from Michael Klein and the law firm Partners, and there were a couple of issues that they raised in their written comments that I would like to address. One of them relates to their request to have the alley be a one-way alley. We did discuss this with them, but realized that it's not our decision. If the council agrees or prefers to have that alley become one-way, the applicant has no objection to that change. The alley maintenance question, that is a public alley owned by the city. We acknowledge that it currently has some rough areas. The engineering department has placed a condition, number 15, that requires the alley, the full width of the alley, to be repaired and repaved with a new gutter for drainage, the full length between Peer View and Civic Center Drive. So that will be addressed as part of the project. And then finally, in terms of construction along that property, this project is not going to have the large cranes that you see down at the hotel project. The equipment's expected to include smaller cranes or power lifts, and as with any project, any encroachment into the public rights of way, which would include the alley as well as Horn and Peer View, requires a traffic control plan and a phasing plan, and those are all reviewed with staff. So if you have any other specific questions relative to any of those comments, again, we would be happy to answer those and address your concerns.
Thank you. And with that, we'll close the public input portion. Deputy Mayor Feller?
Well, thank you. I think I have a different opinion. I think this is wow. This is an outstanding project for that corner. It covers all the, checks off all the boxes as far as effectiveness. I think I might move down into District One and just move in there. It seems kind of exciting, so. I think it's a boom for the shopping center across the street. It's on a heavily, heavy transit route, just one block over on Mission, so it really makes that mode of transportation a real positive. I would ask that we consider making that alley one-way, as Ann has just declared. I read that from Michael Klein as well, and I think you've answered at least two or three of their questions very well. Oceanside's going to be lucky to have this project. There's no question about it. And with that, I move a staff's recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I want to put the project aside for just one moment and congratulate, first and foremost, the leadership of Deputy Mayor Feller and Mayor Weiss on some of the policies you've moved forward. And as a combined body, we've moved forward on a lot of policies. Staff has worked with us closely, and I think a combination of that, the streamline program that we move forward on, I am just thoroughly, thoroughly impressed. This application was submitted in November. Here we are, less than six months later, going from application to entitlement or entitlement opportunity. We'll see what the vote is, and I am just really impressed. So I just, I want to personally thank Deanna for your leadership. I know you were just coming into things, and Jonathan, nothing but flying colors. Everybody I talk to that wants to work with the city of Oceanside, they just love how things are functioning, and from a customer service through to response, and just start to finish, very, very happy, and I'm impressed, and I feel honored and privileged to sit up here and work with such amazing staff. Jeff, thank you so much for your leadership, and too bad Richard's not here. I know he was pivotal in this entire process, and he's on the front lines with the COVID-19, but just thank you guys so, so much for all of your hard work. Six months, I don't know if that's a record, and that's even through COVID-19, so it may have even happened faster if that didn't happen. So, coming back to the project, I am really excited. I think it's exactly what we need. It passes with flying colors. It's going to help reinforce our goals as a city, our policies as a city, and it's going to help support the downtown businesses that we hope to have up and thriving as soon as possible. In my book, I wish it was yesterday, but will be there soon. So I would like to second Deputy Mayor Jack Feller's motion. I'm really impressed with this project, and I look forward to many more. Thank you so much.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Thank you. The previous project, Portola, I asked you to look up how many units were the previous
Mayor and council members, I believe it was 15 condos and seven live work.
15 and seven. Well, I'm actually a little disappointed in this project, because I think when we removed the cap on the density and went to form-based planning, we gave away the store. In the last project that was not included in form-based, they went from 43 units an acre to 58.2 units an acre, and that seemed a lot. I mean, that really feels like a very large project. This went from 43 dwelling units an acre to 162 dwelling units an acre. That's hugely dense. Went from, what did you say, 22 units to 76. Granted, the previous were condos and work lofts, but 76 residential units. I did not see the vegetated green walls. I did not see the, in the diagrams, I did not see the solar panels. I did not see the pedestrian-activated spaces. Could you tell me what the pedestrian-activated spaces are? I noted that there was no setback at all, flush with the sidewalk, so it's not like Mission Avenue where you had setback and you've got some kind of living-room-type spaces in a sense of walkability, pedestrian. So what was this pedestrian-activated spaces, space?
Mayor and council members, if you'll, the slide shows the Peer View street facade, and the reddish color down in the corner is where that pedestrian plaza is. So there's an overhang over it, and then it's an open area, open to the sides.
Right, so that was that picture with like a potential mural there? But that's not a public art piece. Are they going to pay for that?
I believe there, I don't know. I don't believe there's any condition or it's not part of the project description, as I recall.
Okay. Well, I mean, the most glaring thing, if we had density bonus, for example, we could have gotten onsite affordable housing, and that would have been huge for me. Like, okay, we gave away the store, but we're getting something in return, something we desperately need, affordable housing, onsite, built by the developer. We also didn't have superior architectural guidelines that applied to this. So I think that removing completely the cap on density without any conditions kind of gives away things that we really need to have. I have to agree with some of the comments that were made, that, you know, we're a really cool town to be in. We don't have to give away the store. We can expect a lot better, and, you know, it would have been nice to have more or better landscaping. It would have been nice. I mean, the parking spots, 82 are, I guess they're regular size, 68 are tandem, and then the commercial parking lots are all on the street. So it's like everything was waived on this project, and there's no reference at all to what their plans are for affordable housing. I'm assuming then it's going to be in lieu fees?
Mayor and council members, that's correct. They have to, they're not proposing any deed-restricted units, so they would have to comply with our inclusionary housing.
Do we know how much that's going to be?
Pardon me?
I did not see that in the staff report. Do we have an amount?
The amount is, I think it's $8 per square foot plus $1,000, and then there's a unit amount, $100 maybe, and I'm going off memory.
Do you have a total then?
It's in the resolution in the early pages.
Oh, I must have missed that. Yeah, I really think we ought to at least be able to discuss onsite affordability. What about short-term rentals? Are they excluded from this project?
Mayor and council members, I'm not aware of any voluntary prohibition on this project.
Yeah, I think we really have to start, we really should be always thinking outside the box in trying to figure out how we're going to meet arena numbers, and believe it or not, little by little, I don't know how many this would have generated, six? Not that many, right? But it would have been six units. It would have been going forward and ticking off. We have 26 in the last one, another six, that would have been 32, and it's, you know, you start to, you start to get the units that we end up needing to do by, what, 2024?
Well, the new arena is, our updated housing element is due April 2021. And if I may, not to be argumentative, they are proposing very small units. The largest one, I believe, is 800 feet, so there's some thought that perhaps this would function as workforce housing, housing for our locals.
Right, 88, what was it? Five one-bedroom units, 600 square feet, 71 two-bedroom units, 875 square feet. Seemed kind of small. I feel so strongly about the affordable housing that I think we could have done better, so thank you very much.
Mr. Hunt, Councilmember Sanchez just mentioned that everything was waived for this project. I didn't see any variations or variances associated for height or setbacks associated with the project. Are there any?
I was talking about the densities.
And I understand, as far as the mass bulk and scale, this project is very similar to the one before, except that they have much smaller units.
I haven't compared them side by side, but this is allowed per our basic zoning. It's the density that was increased with the council action recently.
Okay, thank you. And I would just say that I think there needs to be a variety of architectural types. I would hate to see every new development in the downtown area look like the Civic Center or the museum, so I think having that variety is critical, and I think this is a good design. And we have a motion in a second. Please vote.
Does that motion include the one-way alleyway, by the way? Nobody addressed that.
Well, I think that's direction the staff is. I mean, we'll have plenty of time to make that change once they get to construction and come back, but I think it makes sense from a traffic standpoint if they look at
Honorable Mayor and council members, my name's Tila Carter. I'm acting city traffic engineer. We are in, staff is in support of the one-way access in the alleyway. However, we were informed that the adjacent residents and businesses are in support of it as well. We would just need something in writing to see that majority or all the people are in support of it, and then we can bring it to council.
Something in writing from the council?
Say one more time?
Something in writing from the council?
No, something in writing from the residents and the businesses that are adjacent to that alley.
Okay, got it.
So just point of clarification. So whatever the majority of the residents want, that'll be brought back to council, and then we can vote on it then? Is that what you're saying?
If they want the one-way, then yes, I would, staff would bring it forward for a recommendation to make it a one-way.
Do we have to have you bring it forward? Can we just give you instruction now as a part of our motion that whatever they decide, just do it?
We could bring back a resolution on consent very quickly.
Motion approved 401. Sanchez, no.
That will go to 19, which is adoption of a resolution to amending the RTIP. And I will open the public hearing and start with disclosures.
A very capable staff.
No public.
Good evening, honorable mayor and city council members. I'm Brian Thomas. I'm the city engineer. Before you tonight is our Transnet Local Street Improvement Plan, our RTIP, projects for fiscal year 2021 through 2025. This is part of our annual update to council. It's also part of a SandAG requirement. There it is. So staff is recommending that city council adopt a resolution to amend the Transnet Local Street Improvement Program of Projects, or POP, in the 2018 Regional Transportation Improvement Program, or RTIP, for the city of Oceanside for the 2020 Transnet POP, and to approve a transfer of remaining unused funds on completed projects to ongoing and future Transnet projects. Every two years, SandAG asks cities to develop their transportation spending plan for the next five years and to formally approve it by resolution. SandAG staff consolidates the plans from member agencies and incorporates them into the RTIP, and then the RTIP is then adopted by the SandAG Board. On June 20, 2018, council approved Oceanside's Transnet Program for inclusion in the RTIP. We are able to amend our program of projects by adopting a resolution consistent with Transnet Extension Ordinance and SandAG Board policies. Our amendments can include project scope changes, project additions or deletions, or changes in project funding. The proposed amendment affects only project funding at this time. The 2018 RTIP covers five years from fiscal year 2019 through fiscal year 2023. A new RTIP is adopted every even fiscal-numbered year, and is defined as the anticipated medium-term program of transnet and regionally significant highway projects. The city's annual CIP budget process defines the specific spending authorization for the upcoming fiscal year. The Environmental Protection Agency and the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration has made significant impacts on the programming of the 2020 RTIP, and as such, SandAG has decided that instead of preparing a new RTIP, there will be an amendment to the existing 2018 one with a new process called the 2020 Transnet POP. The 2020 POP consists of additions or subtractions of revenues between projects, revisions for fiscal year 2021 to be reflected in the city's CIP budget to be adopted this year. Our new transnet revenue for 2021 and 2122 are 2.88. Our new transnet revenue for 2021 and 2122 are 2.88 million and 3.46 million respectively, based on projections provided by SandAG, and there is an anticipated carryover of approximately 2.9 million for this year. We're also requesting the transfer, the approval of transfer of remaining unused funds on completed projects. This is a synopsis of what was provided in the staff report, based on our POP programs. So our available local system improvement, the LSI transnet revenue, is 2.88 million. Our estimated carryover balance is 2.9 million, but the total program that we have in unused and used funds is 6.25 million for the year. So at this point, staff is requesting council to approve the transfer of remaining used funds on completed projects to additional transnet projects, specifically Clementine Intersection Reconstruction and El Camino Guard Rail. We'd like those unused remaining fund balances to be transferred to the Lot 23 deficit and to the Seagate Mobility Construction Project, so that we can help close out those projects. And again, our recommendation is that city council adopt a resolution to amend our transnet local POP and our RTIP for 2020, and to approve a transfer of the remaining unused funds. I am available for any questions at this time.
Mr. Navarro?
We have only one comment that was received, and only one that wanted to be read into the record. This comment is from Kevin Byrne. Regarding Agenda Item Number 19 of the City Council being for May 20, 2020, I urge the City Council to adopt this agenda item. Thank you, Kevin T. Byrne. That concludes the public comment.
Councilmember Sanchez? Well, we'll close the public input portion. Councilmember Sanchez?
Move, adoption, and approval. Thank you.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
I'll just second that. Thank you.
I just had one question that just popped into my brain here. The guard rail project on El Camino, is that an extension of the one that's there? Because there is guard rail coming up, El Camino.
I'll have to look into that one, Deputy Mayor Feller. I believe what we're asking for is them to be carried over so that we can complete certain projects. The money may have already been spent, so we're looking to cover deficits on these things.
Okay, thank you.
We have a motion in a second. Please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Go to 21. Mr. Navarro, you said we had 10? Is that correct?
We have 10 comments that were received at the city clerk's office, and these individuals wanted their comments read into the record. Our first comment is from Drew Andreyoff. "I'm writing to thank city manager Deanna Larson and Public Works. Recently, large rocks were installed on the corner of Airport Road and Bennett Road to deter vehicles from parking and habituating in this area. Since installation, we have seen a complete drop-off of persons parking and residing in this area. Thank you again to all city staff working to continue essential operations during this increasingly difficult time. All your efforts are very much appreciated by the citizens of Oceanside. Drew Andreyoff, District 1." Our second comment is from Arlene Hammerschmidt. "Thank you to our city manager and staff for working long hours and weekends to implement new stages of COVID-19 directions. To our city lifeguards and police for educating, training, and coaching beachgoers in safe COVID-19 measures and rules. To all of our residents respectfully honoring each other's level of risk and safety boundaries. Thank you, Arlene Hammerschmidt." Our next comment's from Becky Rapp. "May is Mental Health Awareness Month. Sadly, during these unprecedented times, we have seen an increase in mental health issues. This can affect how we think, feel, and act. All drugs, but especially marijuana, have increased the risk of suicide and psychosis. Please consider your role in permitting marijuana businesses." Becky Rapp, parent and community volunteer. Our final one, our final comments from Barbara Gordon. "I work with a Hispanic youth group and their families. I am concerned the city continues the normalization, the commercialization of the use of marijuana. It presents a false perception that marijuana is healthy, which has greatly decreased perceived risk of harm. Marijuana use threatens the lives of young people as it directly affects the brain responsible for memory, learning, attention, and reaction time. The rest of Mrs. Gordon's comments will be made available on the city's website." And that concludes the off-agenda public comments.
Thank you. Are there any general council member comments?
Yes. Yeah. Yes, I really want to thank staff for working so diligently with the county and also with the state in how we're going forward. We're doing it deliberately, we're doing it, ensuring that we're going to be safe. That is our utmost responsibility, is to ensure that our communities are safe. And so the reopening process, we're getting into the new part, which is reopening indoor, excuse me, indoor retail and indoor restaurants. So I know staff has been working with our businesses, ensuring that they'll be able to meet with the compliance requirements, which is basically to download the form, make sure that all shop owners are able to do everything within the shop. They just have to post the notice and ensure that the employees are following all the rules, and I'm really, really happy about that. The thing that I really wish that we can do, because I still don't know how our city is doing, because we only get, the only information that we get is a positive test, and in that sense, we're doing pretty good. But does that mean that when we have, like tonight, we have one new positive test? That's it, one new? That's pretty good. Total for the county now is 6,140, that's 114 new. Hospitalizations, 1,155, that's 19 new. ICUs, 351, that's five new. And deaths, we now have 230, so we've lost another eight people. But when we have one, does that mean we only got one test? Or does that mean that we had 100 tests? We need to have, in order for our businesses to thrive, we need to have consumers feel safe. So I understand there's a mobile testing unit in Escondido. We are the largest city in the North County, and whereas our tests are pretty low, I'd still feel better if we were able to have testing in Oceanside. So maybe asking for a mobile unit in Oceanside. We're going to be getting maybe $3 million of the funds from the county that they're agreeing to share with us. At least it's a loan for now, unless we don't get any more funding from the feds, then it becomes a grant. But how can we make this happen? And so far, we don't have testing to see if anyone has already had it, to see what is our immune immunity to COVID. We have senior communities, we have homeless, we have certain densities in some of our neighborhoods, and we have poverty neighborhoods that have, where we have Latinos and basically people of color who are more vulnerable. In fact, over 50% of our populations are vulnerable, because they have, you know, something, some underlying condition, be it asthma, be it, for me, it's my weight. Obesity is 6% of the cause, one of the underlying conditions for COVID deaths, 6%. That's kind of scary, that I don't take any medication, you know, otherwise I'm pretty healthy, and yet I could die if I get this. So it would be great if we could push to get testing information, to get the number of deaths in our community, and for all the cities. I know National City Mayor was asking by zip code. I'd be happy if we at least had it by your city. But I do want to thank staff. I know you guys have been working night and day, our public safety, everybody on the front line. Tri-City Medical Center had some, basically some layoffs for nurses, because their funding capability is really challenged for not just nurses, but the hospital workers. And so we are feeling the pain financially, but we need to show our community that we are prepared, and if we could get a mobile unit and get these things going, then I think our community will feel safer in going to retail and restaurants. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Feller?
Thank you. I have a couple of things. First of all, I would like to congratulate staff for, I've been here almost every day that I can get out of the house. It's amazing that they're doing as much as they're doing with the constraints that they're under. Everybody looks like they're going to be in a Western movie with their mask on all the time, but it is heartening to see our staff put forward the effort that is getting us. I believe we do have the beginnings of getting our cases by zip code already. So when that is up and at them, that'll be great. We, I told Peter that I'd like to close tonight in honor of Joan Brewbaker. Her son and his wife Carmen came by the house on Sunday morning at 9:00 to inform me, and it happened in April, she died in April, on April 27. And there's, some of us have been scolded by her many times over the years, but I always honored her spunk and her tenacious mentality. She always came here with Margaret Malik, or Peggy Malik, riding in from Jeffrey's Ranch. So I would ask that we could honor her by closing the meeting in her name. And I think that's all I have. I know we're getting fewer and fewer. As far as a testing site, I would say that, you know, that our chances are probably not very good at this point, because I think we're getting closer to the end of it all. Anyway, thank you.
So with that, we will adjourn to 3:30 on Wednesday, June 3, and if you would please rise with me, and we'll do a moment of silence for Joan.